I'll never be.
Okay. Good morning and welcome to the Berry County Board of Commissioners Committee of the whole meeting for September 2nd, 2025. If you would please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Reports from state or county officials. Are there any state or county officials with us this morning who'd like to give an update to the board?
So we just wanted to stop by today to thank you for reviewing. Reviewing and considering our budget requests this year. We really appreciate the generous recommended appropriation to support efforts at the conservation.
Is that better?
Yes.
Perfect.
To support efforts at the Conservation District this year. I hope we can continue to grow your investment and the programs and services that the district offers for residents here in the county. And I have brought each of you a packet with a copy of last year's annual report, along with some program brochures and flyers for upcoming events. Of note, your five, your five district staff hosted, spoke at, or collaborated on over thirty-five education and outreach programs this past year, surveyed over fifteen thousand acres across our service area, and connected residents with professionals and programs, generating over one million dollars in conservation investments or economic impact. So, pretty impressive for a small staff of five. And I wanted to, you all, to please mark your calendars. We'll be getting it up on our website here soon for Friday, February 27th, 2026, at 6:30 PM at the Waldorf, just downtown here, for Faces of Conservation and our annual meeting, where organizations and partners from across the region come together for celebration and collaboration. And we hope that you could all be there with us this year. And next, I wanted to introduce David Kumho, who is a former employee of the Conservation District, as well as Berry Eaton Health Department, and a lifetime resident of Berry County and current BCD Board Chair.
So, first off, I want to start out by thanking you guys for the investments you've been making in the Conservation District. It's an essential part of this county. So there's been a lot of change in the district, as Danielle mentioned, in the past few years. But the Conservation District has been committed and will be committed to continue to improve these investments you guys are putting into us. Danielle ran some numbers. This is not me that did this, but approximately ten grant dollars for each dollar that the county has invested is generated. So every dollar you give us, we're giving ten back into the community through grants and using that as match. So, the board recognizes the importance of stability and benefits for our staff in attracting and retaining great staff. Right now, we have some wonderful staff, especially Danielle, and we want to continue to work towards that. So currently, staff does not have benefits. That's a goal we're reaching for, providing technology stipends, reliable vehicles for the staff, because they drew a ton of traveling. So we're hoping that the county will recognize the importance of these investments and continue to invest in Berry Conservation District. So this year, your additional investment will continue to support growing administrative needs as grant management and reporting continue to require increasing levels of expertise and skill to remain competitive and in compliance. And we look forward to continuing to work with the county and local partners as we serve the residents of Berry County. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Questions from commissioners? Yes, Catherine?
Mostly just a comment. You know, I think sometimes people don't understand the role that you play in the community. And, you know, the spongy moth research that you did last year, and really, in quick response, and that's because you had the technical expertise to be able to really jump on that. And, and we, you know, we heard the reporting on that, but there's other ways that I've interacted with the, with the district, with the forester, and it's, it really is a very valuable resource. So, I appreciate all the work you do. And if you have a chance to get out to Outdoor Youth Day, you see the impact, too, of the, of the district in the community and families, and that opportunity that kids have to, to learn about how to love the outdoors through, gosh, I don't, you know, what is it, twenty different booths and organizations? It's fantastic. They could, they got up to almost five hundred kids before COVID, and now it's been incrementally growing since then. It's, it really is a huge event. So, thank you. We're looking forward to it.
Commissioner Bassett?
Yeah, I'm just going to echo what Catherine said. So I have the honor
Yeah, I'm just going to echo what Catherine said. So I have the honor of sitting on this board and have really enjoyed the opportunity to see all that they do. I think that people don't appreciate everything that they do, the many events that they have and they attend, and truly an impact quietly in our community. So thank you for all that you do. Thank you.
Commissioner Smelker?
I agree with the two previous ones, and I really appreciate what you do on invasive species and trying to keep them under control as much as we possibly can. Thank you.
Trying to fight the good fight.
It's more and more all the time. But yeah, it was nice that we had that expertise on the spongy moss, and I think the assessment was right on. I don't think this year was nearly as bad as it's been in previous years, and hopefully that continues. So good information. We appreciate what you do. Thank you. Thank you for the update and for the information.
Thank you for the support.
Additional state or county officials that would like to give an update to the board? Hearing non-limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes on anything on our agenda this morning. Hearing non-Morgan from the animal shelter. Good morning.
I am here today to request the Board of Commissioners to approve.
Okay. I think we have all approved these in the past, except Marcia. Okay. Would you give a brief explanation of what the 270 is and what the grant is for?
Yeah, so the 270. Basically, we trap. We give them. And then they get released back.
And that's been a program we've been going on for at least seven years, maybe closer to 10. I'm not sure which.
Closer to 10.
So many, many cats, but I don't know if we're winning the fight or not, but it just doesn't seem to stop, does it?
No, it does not.
Yeah, so this is a grant that we've done several times in the past. 270's been a great partner for the animal shelter. So we've used some of our own phones as well, some of our own funds as well. But this is a standard request. We've done it several times. Any additional questions or comments from commissioners?
A quick question. Is this an ongoing thing, or you have specific days where you have people bring the cats?
This will be something that we.
How do you publicize those days?
Normally, people just call and ask.
Mr. Colton?
Created some misinformation last year. Who'd it call? They call you?
Us, yes.
Call Animal Control. Now, I didn't quite catch.
Animal Shelter, right.
Animal Shelter.
Animal Shelter is different.
Animal Shelter.
Animal Shelter. You call the animal shelter.
So you neuter, you do the rabies vaccine. You said ear tipping?
Yep, they take the tip of the ear off.
It blew the left or right ear. Left ear tipped, not chipped. And Dan, what was the nutrition thing?
Fleet prevention? The flea prevention.
Flea prevention?
Yeah.
Okay. Lot of things you're doing. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Morgan, if you wanted to comment on 270, just that can be the only grant running at the time.
Yeah. 270, they don't like.
Okay. Are we using animal shelter funds in the meantime, or any, you know, some of the donation fund in the meantime for some of that during the gap, or no?
We did not this time, but I think we will.
Okay, the chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval to accept $10,000 from 270, Inc. for the purpose of the trap, neuter, and release program.
The move.
Support.
Motion by Bassett, support by Smelker, to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval to accept $10,000 from 270, Inc. for purposes of the trap, neuter, and release program. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. One thing I just skipped over. The chair would entertain a motion for approval of the August 19, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
Support.
Motion by Colton, support by Getty for approval of the August 19, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries. Next up, Jim Dull. Poe Dunk Lake is back.
Morning, Commissioners. Typically, the lake level statute says we have to spend up to $10,000 doing repairs or whatever on any structure. I brought this in front of you guys because there's never been a special assessment district set up to offset these costs. I thought, well, if it's coming out of general fund, it's probably better to handle it a little different. We did finally get Ron Corris did doing the repairs at Poe Dunk Lake. The report showed a number of things that needed to be done. If anybody wants to copy of it, I can get the hard copies. He came in at $5,000, and typically, we figure tons of content contingency because there might be other things while he's in there. And then you have to have the engineer write a report, send it to Tom Horas at the dam station, and yep, all this stuff happens. So we're asking for $6,000 to be set aside for this. First, I'll raise a question.
Whether it's for.
Doing a, you know, setting a special assessment.
This is for that.
Level. And all.
After discussions with Doug Kelly, some can cost, I was incorrect quite a while back, they can be recovered if a special assessment district is set up. And right now, we're $7,235.81 in the hole on this project. So. Not a lot, but it just.
It seems to be worth bringing up to the commissioners whether that's something they want to look at. I know nobody likes to do that, but.
When.
The people on the lake are the ones that get the benefit of the lake. So then we've got 12 others that all have special assessment districts.
We have 12 other dams in the county, all of which have special assessment districts.
These are half or we're working on them.
The Cloverdale one and the Pleasant Lake one, they haven't finished yet. So we have 12 of them. Jordan Lake, O'Donovan Lake, yada, yada, yada.
Okay.
Something to think about.
What's our $7,200 in the hole? You said we're $7,200 in the hole.
This has been built.
For the county every year since the mid-'70s. And there ain't a special assessment district to spread it on, so the cost of just going through over time.
Okay. What is your recommendation for this going forward?
I don't like doing special assessment.
But realistically, the people on.
The lake are the ones that, you know, they get the biggest benefit of this. And lake level.
Lake level statute doesn't.
Say anything about the county paying anything on it. I know Christopher Lake, when Tom Doyle was in, he set the county at 10 or 12%. I don't know the rationale behind it. He just.
Did it and passed.
For me, it's a property owner thing. You live on the lake, typically, it's the front lot.
And the needed access to pay on.
Any of this stuff.
And it shouldn't be on the county, but.
You know, I, that's why it goes to the commission, to decide.
Okay, so you're saying this is a commission decision, not a drain commission decision? All right.
There was a drain district. We have a special assessment.
And what is the process for the commission approving a special assessment district?
Let me.
Get the breakdown.
I mean, if there are potentially 12 other dams in the county, they're all being paid for by the property owners, it seems like this should probably fall into the same.
Yep.
At some point, like you said, it's not a lot of money, but by the same point.
Yeah.
Well, and the thing is, if this ever blows out, then you're going to fix the dam and you're going to do a special assessment district at the same time.
Not part of a drain district? Then this is just, okay.
You read the files, and there was, there is.
Mention a Poe Dunk Lake drain, but we haven't been able to find it because we don't have a Rutland Township book, which is a real drag for us, because I'm sure there's a lot of other drains out there. And this could have been originally put in as a drain structure, but I doubt it because it's got Wallace.
Yeah, we were.
Done in 1955, went to the court. They just didn't do a special assessment.
Hmm. They did that, but they didn't do a special assessment district. Interesting.
Yeah.
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 It'd be nice if everything that's done was done all the way through instead of halfway like a many projects in this county.
All right, so this request is for us to approve the expenditures of up to $6,000 for repairs to the Poe Dunk Lake Dam. Basically, you're saying this year will be out of the county's pocket.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, it'd be on the, yeah.
It'll be on the old bill, and the bill will go up to $13,000.
Okay.
How many properties are there?
Don't have a list of. I'll get that in some.
Some kind of process.
And the steps that it takes to do that, so.
Like you're considering.
But either way, we got to get this inspection. While we had.
The inspection, we have to get the work done to satisfy Tom Horas' opinion, to be happy with this thing.
And this is not a big dam?
No.
More of a water control structure?
Well, no, yeah, yeah, it's 100%.
Control structure. First, right now, with no water in the county, it wouldn't be here.
Good time to fix it.
I got one question.
Bob?
Who's on the hook if we don't set up this county, solely the county? So if the dam, if we were to get 20 inches of rain within the next year, and all of a sudden it did blow out, just solely the county's on the hook?
Yeah, at that point, they could set up, they could do the work. Not, I believe, then. Not guaranteed on that. From.
Okay. Additional questions? Okay. John, no?
I believe that we should have Jim look into this special assessment thing, bring us back the full information on it.
Okay. The chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval to spend up to $6,000 for repairs to the Poe Dunk Lake Dam structure.
So moved.
The park.
Motion by Tunison, support by Smelker, to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval to spend up to $6,000 for repairs to the Poe Dunk Lake Dam structure. Any additional discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries.
By the way, I wanted to pump up Conservation District, because just up there, Danielle and I and Jake have been working on a crossing on stairs and parrot, and it looks like that single.
So.
We will get about a $400,000 bridge for.
Basically, almost.
The road commission is doing the hard stuff, and Danielle, through her grants and stuff, has got the money for the engineering and all the other stuff. So you don't think they get your money back? I mean, that's $400,000.
I don't have to put on a drain, so.
That's off of them.
Where is it going in it?
Well, we know that stairs and parrot drain goes into the little thorn apple.
Okay.
So it's a, it's two, it's a double barrel, six-foot culvert that is.
Pay undersized, blowing out the banks downstream.
But Jake and I and Danielle have been working on it. And we offered, what, $30,000 for the engineering, put that on the drain because it's a benefit to the drain, and it looks like she's going to get almost everything covered here.
That's out by State and Wellman in that area?
It's.
If you went rush road, it's a little bit downstream of there. So if you went out 42, it's up in the northern corner.
Okay.
Out by Woodland.
It'd be Carlton Township, right?
Yeah, it's out by Woodland area.
Woodland Township?
It comes from Woodland Township.
Center all the way around and across, and then down to the little thorn apple.
So that's all, guys. You're doing us a good job. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm glad that we're going to look at the issue of a special assessment going forward. Personally, I would have some issue with trying to recover all of the prior year expenses that we have absorbed, because failed, prior commissions failed to create the special assessment district on a timely basis. So that means, you know, who knows how properties have changed hands and things out there, so that we're now going to be imposing assessment that should have been paid by prior property owners.
That makes sense.
I do think that we need to look at it forward, but I have an issue with.
Okay, that's a good thought. We'll see what Jim comes up with in the near future. So, all right, departmental budget appeals. This morning, we have Dan Patton with us. Good morning, Dan.
The one and only.
The one and only.
I don't know if it's on or off.
I don't know.
Yeah, that's for sure. Morning, Commissioners. Thank you for giving me a few minutes of time to come up and make a quick appeal. It looked like there were a lot of other department heads making appeals today, so I'll try to make it short and sweet. Hopefully, there's some information in your packet at what we're looking at. I don't know how to make a chipper look sexy. If I could, I would, but it is what it is. We, we're just, so there were a couple of things this past year that happened that kind of changed our view of burning brush. One of them is we had to call the fire department because somebody decided to set one on fire, and it ended up, we burnt about 15 acres. Thank goodness the fire department was able to show up and take care of it for us, but not necessarily what we need to happen or want to happen. The other is, you know, a few years back, we ended the program of using inmates for various reasons, and primarily just because of the sentencing structure that changed within the court system. So we just don't get, we don't get that free labor anymore. And we haul a lot of brush. Obviously, with the trail system, it's a little bit odd there because we can't pile brush up in the middle of the trail system. So, you know, spatially, we're just running out of room alongside the trails to eradicate and get rid of it. So there's that issue. And just burning it is a whole nother factor. This investment gives us an opportunity to utilize it in multiple facilities. Product, I mean, I guess that's. generate from the chipper we do. Running one off and on, we borrowed one from the road commission off and on, but. Unit, you know, forms, I think, are factoring into that, just the amount of tree debris that we're dealing with. We're still cleaning up from the Emerald Ash. Plus, it's probably the right time to try to move forward. As indicated in the budget, half the money request is from. After you try to answer the questions, model we went with, it's kind of middle of the road. You can see, I think I gave you the pricing sheet, just want to say the contract. It's kind of middle of the road. There's some a little cheaper, some a little more expensive. We wanted to move into a drum style, chipper. Late style, because it just. Burn of late, right then. I will say this, just as another little option. Have a talk with IT that we were. I will say this, just as another little option, um, I have a talk with IT that we were just, why does chipper to IT when they were given? That was a joke Mike and I had together a couple of weeks ago, so. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments from Commissioners?
Good question. Is there any kind of a market for used chippers out there? And the price, can you tell me the price? Is it the 35,000 or the 18? I saw two different prices, so 35,000. Is there any kind of a market for used?
You know, I don't know. I, I haven't looked into the used market. I mean, we, we-
Trying to do new equipment.
I don't know what the requirements are from-
Finish the same point.
To clean out what's happening, that answer I guess.
Commissioner Getty?
A point of clarification, no one from Parks accidentally lit the brush on fire. This was, this was outside, unsanctioned influences within the park.
Yeah, yeah, so we had a brush file on one of the-
There's some on the road. We don't know if he set it on fire.
Honestly, thank goodness there were some neighbors across from River Road who came to the office, contacted me and said, hey, your field's on fire. Just by our staff, over. We always make a phone call and we burn quite a bit, I'll be honest.
I, I, I think, I mean, obviously, I was involved, you know, at the board level with recommending this in our budget, but it really is quite beneficial if you think about our, our trails, you know, Bailey Park, our Bailey Nature Preserve, the, the trails out at Charlton Park. We have a lot of, of tree maintenance, like Dan spoke of, just to make sure that those spaces are safe. And while you do just cut and leave in place at times, there are other times that you really do need a, a chipper. And economically wise, I think this is, you know, a, a small expenditure for the county, you know, with Charlton Park picking up half of it as well.
One of the things we do, so we work with a number of local contractors with the high range equipment.
The only thing we do-
Huge part of the call in terms of working with the contractor. Alan Ensley stopped in, took care of a branch just over the weekend and didn't charge us for it. So, I mean, we've got, built some relationships with folks. We utilize them in the capacity that we need them, but we also feel like we can take care of the job. Positive beyond just the need for of working down.
Yeah, that makes, that makes good sense that you can utilize that, that they just cut it down and you guys take care of it, which makes sense to me. So, I mean, I can see where it would come in beneficially.
Yeah, and product, I mean, we're-
We do reach out periodically to raise them up.
You would generate a buy product, didn't you?
Commissioner Campbell, any thoughts?
It's expensive to buy.
And you're definitely gonna save on labor, definitely gonna save on, certainly looks safe and everything. There's some good safety features on it.
Yeah, I would say outside of chainsaw.
Commissioner Hatfield?
Hi.
Commissioner Smelker?
I see that Charlton Park does have a fund balance. Is that your mark for grant system or?
Yes.
That's why we are requesting half of the payment and not to take it out of fund balance.
So, split cost because of the use of-
Gonna use them all on the parks and rec.
Correct, yeah.
Equipment, no?
Yep.
Okay.
Let Chair use peace.
Mr. Colton?
Eddie.
I have one last question. So the county does not own a chipper shredder right now?
Road Commission has a stump grinder and-
Chipper from 1970?
We, we borrowed theirs before. It, it is a-
Really old unit. I don't think it's safe.
That's my, someone else. And we haven't used that, that one. That's the only other one that I've-
Certainly ours would be available to- Of the-
Correct. Brush. Two jobs. Yeah. I know where it'd be, the body else outside.
And you said this is through the My Deal program?
Uh, Eddie.
Okay. So it's already been bid out as far as the lowest price goes?
Eddie's correct. That product is actually, it's a thing somewhere.
I saw that Remus. Remus, Michigan, in, you know, it seems like a reasonable request. There's just a lot of concern when you look at our budget numbers this year, having five union negotiations that we're in the process of, not knowing where those are gonna land as yet. The state talking about increasing the cap that we can pay on healthcare. I mean, there are several half million dollar hits to the county budget and we're trying to be very, very conservative this year with projections, not knowing. Had we had our budget settled and this came to us mid-season for something, you know, I'd probably be a lot more open-minded to it and it's not that I'm not. I can, I see the benefit of it, it's just that, trying to protect what we, from the unknown, so to speak, right now, where we're going forward, so. So Board?
You probably just answered the question, but I was curious as to Eric's perspective on it.
Their request had come from capital, placement funds. So there is funding in there and more of a philosophical. And we've had these past, our projects in the past where we split costs, but being my first year, wanted to work through it. I felt Dan coming to pitch to you would be the best option rather than me just granting it, and I can see the need for it, but we have a lot of needs, so I think it was just a, this is a priority for the commission and if it does, it would come on a capital, which there is a bunch to address.
Okay. Good information. Any further discussion?
One more question.
Yes.
Sorry. I'm looking to see, is it on the recommended capital projects for 2026?
It's not.
It's not? Okay, that's why we're pulling it out, putting it here. Okay, thank you.
All right, so this would be added to it.
Got it.
There's not necessarily a gender request, but I guess at this point, the Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of an expense of up to 17,636 as an additional capital request for the 2026 budget year.
I'll make that motion.
John's got a question.
John.
Do it in discussion.
I'll second it for discussion.
There you go. Smelker. All right, thank you.
Should we be voting on these before we hear them all, the appeals?
This is it.
This is all?
This is the only appeal.
I'm the only person you get to hear from today, sorry.
Bound to be other things, ain't there, or not?
That's it. No other appeals? This is the only budget appeal for this year?
I'm shocked. Okay.
That's what I said when I saw it as well, so, but that is it, so. Additional questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, Dan.
Dan, thank you all. You'd say a couple of weeks, we'll figure it out. Saw Danielle up here earlier. We're also hosting a, we're hosting a volunteer work day at the nature preserve in a month. You're all invited to come.
Work.
I think it's during one of our meetings though. I, I don't think it is. Is it? I think that we're gonna be off that day. Really? I had that conversation with Danielle.
Good morning, Eric. One certain-
I think we're gonna be off.
Continuing our budget discussion for 2026.
Well, you've got the one appeal that we've had. We did the introduction last week. I haven't received any other specific questions. I did respond to Commissioner Getty's request directly to her. I should've copied the rest of you on it with the increase in miscellaneous funds and that was specifically for training, employee training that I have planned for the next year, health, safety and some other supervisory and technical type training as well. That was the increase there.
Okay.
Where was that again, Eric?
That was in general fund miscellaneous. There was a $25,000 increase.
Could Eric go over what else is in miscellaneous?
Sure. John's question was what else is under miscellaneous?
Miscellaneous, I mean, as it is, it covers a wide range. We have drain, I believe drains is in there, the county share of the drains, we have $200,000 in there for that. Wish I had my lighting in here for you. There is a accounting with Raymond that's in there. Willa helped me out on the other things I'm missing.
Yes, so we pay for all the copy paper, family, hospital, doctors, and so on. Yes, we pay for the audit, we pay for our report out of there, we pay for the work that used to be Walter Brooks and Sheldon, but now is written also, our pre audit work. We do employee physicals out of there, we do the county program-
BICAP program for employees, minimal costs, but they just can buy it in miscellaneous. As Eric mentioned, there's money in there for miscellaneous, expensive drains.
Thank you.
A lot of miscellaneous things.
Yeah, the drains is a $200,000 expense to the county. We'll probably come just, just in underneath that, but yeah, with that's 6,000, we'll probably be a little closer.
When you say 200,000, that is the county's 10% share of any drain assessments done throughout the year?
That is correct.
That's what we're budgeting for?
Yep.
Ouch.
Yeah, it's $200,000 here, $500,000 there, things add up quickly.
Yeah, no doubt.
Okay.
And I'm happy, I mean, I'm happy to answer any other questions at this point. Otherwise, we are set to have a public hearing in October for the budget.
Public hearing in October and then approval?
Yep.
Okay. No further questions?
I have a quick question.
How did we know?
This is my first cycle, so bear with me. We've talked in the past about unfilled positions in the county and I'm curious if all of them are still in here, some of them were removed. Where does that stand?
We, the one, I would say, we are funding the positions the same level they were in '24 and '25. There are positions that just by, you know, filling the position, leaving, people leaving, I think the Sheriff's Department was the one where we really had some unfilled positions. And I think DAR had informed us that they did, they will be upfilled soon on the, on the road deputies. They've got some people coming on board. Corrections officers, are you close? I thought you were getting close on that dude.
Yeah, we are close. We're through entry process and I think we have at least one on field training.
So we're, that, that was the one department where we had gaps, otherwise it was more of just the timeframe as it gets to hire somebody as they leave. There really wasn't unfilled positions. Comment was made at the commission, I think that was not entirely correct. At the time, there may have been five openings, but not unfilled.
Good night.
Eric Hatfield?
On the recommended capital projects, were there other requests that were not recommended?
If you look on the page in here, yeah, there were, everything with the jail wasn't recommended this year. I told DAR and Lieutenant Nevins, Under Sheriff Herb, that until we get through our process, I wasn't really wanting to move forward with any jail recommendations, but this time next year, we'd have a much more serious discussion. If we don't have a plan for our new jail moving forward, we'd have to figure out what we're doing at that point. Besides that, no. People surprisingly were, I guess, not as aggressive this year as I expected them to be, so I appreciate that. But yeah, that's, oh, and there, well, I take that back, there was, the clerk gave me two proposals for digitalization of records. I went with this cheaper one rather than the expensive one, so I had that one as well.
I think from a presentation standpoint, might be helpful to have a requested column versus a recommended column.
And that's what we had, that's what I tried to do with the separate document, the separate 26 capital approval plan that had everything on it.
Okay.
And then the other table had the requested, the recommended amount. So I just, we'd have to look between the two. We'll, we'll play with that for next year.
Okay. Particularly when it, you know, comes to looking at requests like for the chipper.
Yeah.
It's interesting, it would be interesting to compare, make an evaluation of how does the need for the chipper compare to the need for some of the other things that ended up being requested but not approved?
We'll play with both of those charts for next year.
Okay.
I know what I was getting at, I'm an appeal.
Yeah. And I see the 451,000 in there for enterprise resource planning software. We're getting closer on that?
We're getting there.
Okay.
And that was, as I mentioned at the last meeting, that was our second lowest budget bid. So it was our lowest budget bid. We thought we'd give ourselves a little room. I don't, hopefully we won't be spending the 451,000, it'll be a little less, but we'll have that weighed by staff and come up with a recommendation for it in the near future.
And that's for implementation in 2026, probably mid-2026?
I think it's gonna probably take most of 2026.
Okay.
There will be, there will probably be different stages of it.
Mm-hmm.
But yeah, it will be hopefully not leaking too much into '27.
Okay.
I have a question.
Mr. Getty?
I wanna, I wanna go back to the miscellaneous column for a minute. The, the drain miscellaneous, did you say 200,000?
I did.
And does, do things like what we talked about today with Podunk, that falls into that, that column?
That's where we would, that's where we coded to.
Um.
Or we would go in the drain, that one might, actually, that one would probably would go in the drain commission budget because that's, the other one is more of our assessed values.
It, it seems like an awful lot of money not to be captured in a drain district or by the people that were benefiting from it. It just, it strikes me as a, as a huge number. For instance, it's substantially more than our entire Parks and Rec budget.
The 200,000 is actually our share of all the different drain districts.
So when we're assessed?
Yes. So they take that percentage based on the- So they take that percentage based on the drain that it's at, and then that's where that GL is coded to.
Got it.
And why doesn't it have its own account, insurance account?
That's where it's spent historically. That doesn't mean we can't move it to the drain commissioners, you know, department. Well, you know why there's a, historically, we've done that?
No, I think, no, at one point it was like standalone line item in the general fund budget. But it got incorporated to miscellaneous. I'm not sure why it moved. But it was still in the general fund budget.
Yeah, I mean, it's, to me, it's, I mean, it's, we can do it as a line item in the drain commissioners' budget. We can do a separate department. It's, it is still general fund dollars either way. But if you want to see that broken out so that, you know, we have a full understanding of that cost, we can do that.
I think it, it puts more transparency in the budget of, you know, where we're, where we're allocating resources.
Yep, I agree.
We can do that.
And you can track it. You can watch it.
Okay.
One other question on commission on aging and I'm looking at Fund 275 and Fund 463. The construction fund is still showing a projected deficit at the end of the year. But am I correct in assuming that there is money to be transferred out of 275 to cover most of that shortfall?
That, and there's still fundraising being done, and there is.
Meeting we had last week with the steering committee. They now are within $200,000 of goal, and are still optimistic on being able to achieve that.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's not reflected in here at this point, but that will be, that's just a number that's in there that gives Courtney something to shoot for.
Okay. We don't need a motion on this at this point. This is just for discussion to get some questions answered, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions or concerns?
Good work.
I said, this was, this was a learning year. I sat back and watched the process a lot. I think Luella really carried the water on this one. So I thank her for all her efforts. So we'll spend, the '27 budget process will really be, you know, trying to break things down a little more. Really, if we see, there's some things I'd like to restructure, so. But that's, like I said, this was a good year for me to do that with Luella here, to really pick her brain and work with a lot of new department heads. So I appreciate all their help and support on this.
Okay.
Please, I've got one more question if I could ask it, too.
On how you engage with them and putting this together.
We plan on doing that next year and probably a little bit more. I didn't get to everyone this year just by timing. But that's my goal next year is really to, as everyone submits their budget, to really have that discussion directly with them. And my discussion with Dan was, you know, specific, Dan, I can't do this right now. This is why. I have no issue if you go to appeals, so feel free. I mean, anybody can come to appeals, but I, like, please do it. I just think that's a commissioner decision that needs to be made, so.
Commissioner Bassett.
Okay, I have one more question on this. So there's a study of classifications and compensation that was put in 2027 and not 2026. And I was curious what it is and why a year later.
It's, we have, our classification study in EU was last updated back in 2015, 16. And it's something that, it's been on my radar since I started. It's one of the things I heard during the hiring process. That's something we wanted to look at. As we have enough going on next year, that it's not a project I want to tackle in '26. The ERP project's going to be a massive undertaking for the county. And I don't need that, I don't want to distract from that. So we have all of our union contracts up this year. Ideally, for negotiation, everything else would have been nice to do it last year or the current year we're in. But I think it's something we need to talk about and how we proceed with it. It's just not a project I'm wanting to tackle next year.
Then one last question. So during my time here, we did look at some classifications of positions and reclassify them. Was that based on the old study, then?
It's a process that comes into play as jobs evolve. So as you recall, in the budget process, there were a couple for the court services. And as Inez is looking at restructuring some of her offices and trying to set a path forward for people to have that ladder. She looked at and changed those jobs a bit to make sure that they could come in at one and then grow to two, not just get stuck at one. So there is some evolution in their scales. We have other things like, you know, the deputy administrator, the administrative coordinator. One of that, one was a new job. One was, you know, we looked at, things have changed. It's not just, some people try to use it as a way to, hey, I want to get more money. It's not that. It's really to look at how has your evolved changed from the beginning? And there are standards within there that say these are requirements of the job, education, what leadership ability do you have, or responsibility do you have? There's multiple standards. What freedom to act? And you get points, and then they give that point slides into the classification. So it's a very convoluted process, shall we say? And there's only, I think Luella and I now are the only two left from the original classification. So it's something that we have discussed and something we'll continue to discuss. And I know you'll probably end up seeing more classification requests, but administratively, we're going to have it, the department heads and I will have a chat about that at some point.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? All right.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. At this time, limited public comment. Anybody wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes for anything on your mind.
Hi. So I'd like to take a moment to respond, as a deputy from the county clerk's office, to some of the comments made last meeting regarding our office. I understand that not everyone is familiar with the day-to-day for each, you know, of the departments. However, I was disappointed to hear our office, and by extension, our clerk, was criticized for practices that have been longstanding. Our office closes from 12:30 to 1:30, a schedule we followed for years. This timing aligns with the circuit court and the district court, and helps us coordinate more effectively with departments we interact with regularly. It's not about avoiding work. It's about consistency and operational efficiency. We also close to the public at 4:30. This is so we can reconcile our funds, get our deposits ready, as well as our daily reports. These steps are essential for ensuring that public funds are handled accurately and securely. There are standard internal control that supports sound financial and audit practices. It was suggested that these practices reflect a lack of transparency, and I would respectfully disagree. Transparency isn't defined as being physically open every minute of the day. True transparency means maintaining accurate records, complying with FOIA, filing reports on time, providing public access to information, and following the law. And we do all of this. I don't make policy, and I don't speak on behalf of our clerk. But I do take pride in our work. And hearing our office publicly criticized, you know, without prior discussion, was frustrating and felt unfair to the team that consistently shows up and does their job with professionalism and integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Kind of help you out a little bit. When we hire somebody and, let me back up. Before we hire somebody, you go through the application process. So you have to make it through the application process before you even go to the interview. You have to make it through the interview. Then we do a background investigation. It's a very, very thorough one. I remember getting a phone call when they were doing background on me from my kindergarten teacher. They called for character references, and what they're looking for is, see how you've grown in life. And then, once you get through the background, they do the hiring phase. And you go through four months of training, and you start out with a deputy. And you go to another training deputy, then a third training deputy. And your fourth month, you go back to the first one, and they have to see growth. If we don't see growth, we basically tell you goodbye and move on to the next candidate. So let's say you make it through your four months training, then you have one year of probation. And we're looking for growth there, too. So there's quite a process when it comes to hiring and keeping and maintaining employees and stuff like that. And we do that for corrections and for law enforcement. And if you think about it, we give you a gun, a shield, and a souped-up car. We expect some good character out of you, so a lot of authority with that. So that's, that's why it takes so long. We, we got two right now. They're going through the background check for the corrections. So that's where we're at with that. So also, I got to throw a shout-out to the clerk's office. When the CPL, you weren't even here for the CPL stuff. When the concealed pistol license stuff come through, I don't think any of them got a pay raise for doing all that extra pay and that work. And it is kind of a pain because you got people coming in because they're happy because this stuff's not done right now. So for you clerks out there, I love you guys to death, okay? Thanks.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Rick Moore, Harbor Master, the Podunk Lake Yacht Club. My family bought my grandparents' house in 1964. When I moved out there with them, I called it Wrinkle City because everybody is retired there. And now, many years later, that property, we're one of the few people who are still family-owned there. The entire road of Moore's Landing Drive, it's all new property owners. There might be one that's been around as long as the Moore family. And so it's a good idea not to tax the new people who just moved in there for back expenses long before they were there. But it's important to maintain that dam because I vaguely remember in 1955, when my grandfather was building that house, I was only four years old, five years old. But I remember that the water was way out there because they were building the dam and didn't bring the water level up. So yes, that needs to be maintained. But also, one of the things that I say over and over again is when you have the right tools, the job's half-done. And that's why Sheraton Park needed that chipper. Because if you trim a whole bunch of limbs, and then you got to take a wagon all the way to the other end of the park to dump them off to make a bunny habitat out of that, and then it becomes a fire hazard, becomes that. Well, you can ship those limbs up, and it's a tiny fraction of the volume of that pile of limbs. And so it's so important to have new, good equipment because the reason the equipment is being sold used is because it's used up. And it might only have 25% of its lifespan left, and you're paying 50% of the price because the guy that sells that wood chipper to you wants to make a profit. And the guy that's selling a new wood chipper knows that, oh, man, these are so expensive. I got to cut the price down a little bit. And so that's what they do. So once again, when you have the right tool, the job's half-done. This is Rick Moore, and I support this message. Thank you very much. And you should tell your name when you come up here, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll address it in Commissioner comments. Additional public comment? Hearing none. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Bassett?
Nothing. I just have some meetings this week, Orangeville and Community Mental Health. And then I'm going to go tour the jail or the county courts building. I don't know anything about that building, and I'm going to find out on Thursday.
There you go. Who's giving you the tour?
Dave.
Yeah, perfect. Commissioner Colton? Commissioner Getty?
Last Tuesday, we mentioned that we had interviews for the health department Tuesday afternoon. We interviewed three candidates and made a selection of Rebecca Condon for the next health officer. So we'll be negotiating that contract and, but I am optimistic that she is going to be the, you know, a young face, a young leader that's going to do a good job during very difficult times. So just wanted to let everybody know. I think you got an email as well, but went well.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Smoker?
Nothing.
Mr. Tunison?
As Commissioner Hatfield mentioned, we did have a steering meeting last week about the COA. It's moving along well. The storm drains are all in on the parking lot. The footings are in. The underground for the plumbing will be going in this week, they thought. And then concrete will be poured for the flat work, so then they can start the construction part of that of the building, the building. So moving along well. The biggest hurdle is still dealing with MDOT on a permanent driveway off of M79. There's a discussion that it'd be the most logical place for it, entrance to the COA. But, you know, it's, it's up to the state of Michigan, right? To determine that. And they want a traffic study and all that stuff. It'd be an expensive venture, so.
Nice.
As usual, always something. But it's moving along very well, and I think we're all very pleased with the progress, so.
Good to know. Commissioner Campbell?
I'd just like to say, I think our clerk department, I think we have excellent, I think we have excellent departments in many areas in Berry County, if not all. But I do, I do run into the chastising quite often that the public comes to a particular area of, like, maybe possibly the clerk, for an example, clerk office at lunchtime, which is their available time to come and visit when the offices are closed. I understand that there's things, reasons for that and everything, but if there's anything in the future that could seal that complaint up, it'd be greatly appreciated because it is one of the concerns that I get constantly from constituents. It's in the form of chastising me that they go to these public offices and departments, and they can't get service during their lunch hour, so. Just my two cents on it. I know we do a great job. We have great departments. That's not a question. I'd just like to not be getting chastised for lunch hours.
Okay. Commissioner Hatfield?
Thank you. Bruce, I'm glad you said that, but, you know, there were comments made last week that really were, I think, made primarily because of our proposal to eliminate the COW meetings in favor of going twice a month, board meetings. I'm glad that we made the decision that we made because although the complaint indicated that they thought that that limited the constituents' ability to come in here and comment, I think our current practice of really considering significant issues on two different occasions also necessitates people coming in here twice instead of just once to share their concern. So I think you can argue the COW board meeting issue both ways. I was disappointed to hear the accusations that there are numerous other ways that our offices are not being as accessible as possible to our constituents. We have a number of department heads who are, I think, both offended and concerned by the comments that he made last week. And I, at least for one, will say that I do not share those. I think we always need to be looking to make sure that we're providing the best service possible. But I also, particularly, if I put my banker hat back on, I understand the security issues and the audit issues that are always going to be problematic when you have offices with very limited staff. So I think right now, we're doing a great job. We always need to figure out if we can do it better. But I think the type of criticism that was made last week was out of voice.
I agree. Those were some good thoughts. Those were some good thoughts, Commissioner Hatfield, but, and I think some of the emails that we got explaining that as well, just from the fact that because of some of the incidents in the past, they're not comfortable leaving one person in an office over lunch by themselves to handle some of the things they've run into. So I'm sure there's an opportunity to look at those things, but we're trying to run tight on staff, not over budget, not put extra people in place. So when you do that, there's gotta be a give and take in there somewhere. So we're running as fiscally responsibly as we can with the people that we have. And they're doing a great job, so no complaints. We just have to, like I said, like Bruce said, there's always an opportunity to evaluate and see if we can do better, so. Thank you all. Welcome back to our Monday, Tuesday. That was a quick weekend and here we are already, so you know, boom. We will see you next Tuesday.